Board of Education, regular session for Thursday, February 22nd, 2018 is called to order. Please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this day. We also want to thank you for the opportunity to advocate for our children, and I would hope that the words that come out of our mouth reflect that and reflect your love for them. In Jesus' name, amen.
Recommend approval for the agenda for February 22nd, 2018.
Motion.
Sir?
Have motion and second. Is there any discussion or question? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. For our update, it is, uh, it's been a busy couple of days, a tumultuous couple of days. We have, um, have heard from many community members as far as dealing with threats and potential threats that we've, that we've had coming into a variety of our schools. And, um, we have worked, our principals have worked extremely hard to gathering evidence and working with local law enforcement and us, and, uh, and we're, we're trying to find ways to communicate these things as quickly as possible to our community members, our stakeholders and parents, to let them know. And, uh, and I want to thank, you know, a lot of the folks that are here today, but so many of those messages that, um, I know that I've received through text, emails, Facebook, Twitter, um, and a lot of different ones, and I'm sure you guys have too, but those that have, you know, it's at a time now where we have to advocate, you know, for, for our families and our kids, and what we're seeing now is our kids are starting to advocate for themselves and their own safety in their schools. And so, it's, uh, you know, it's exciting to see students not hesitate to come forward when they have information, um, that they may or may not be completely concrete, but they're, they're coming forward telling the folks that should know, and, um, and I'm proud of the way that our folks have taken that information in and acted on it. So, part of tonight, one of the agendas is going to be an overview and a discussion of our safety protocol. My documents will be making a presentation on that, and, uh, and there'll be a time for you guys to have comments and questions and things like that. If the questions are more specific, we'll, we'll, for safety reasons, we'll, um, we'll go to executive sessions to talk specifics if you guys have questions about that, but the general, overall thing of our, our way of kind of tackling these issues, we can, will be part of his presentation. So, thank you guys for coming this evening and advocating for your, for your community and schools and students, and so all of us have been, uh, been affected by this in our families in one way or another. So, appreciate you guys on that. Uh, we're going to start off today with, uh, this is an exciting time for, uh, our National Board Certified Teacher Recognition. So, teachers get certification that's required by universities to be able to teach within the state, but there's also a national certification. This is an extremely rigorous process, um, that is, has teacher testing involved in this. You've got to be an expert in your content area. You've got to provide multiple videos, and you're writing pretty much several thesis statements with this. It is scored, and, um, and, and then you, you get a report back months later if you receive the points allocated or not. This is one of the things the state values, the students with teachers who are National Board Certified perform at a higher rate, and in fact, 1.3 grade levels above a, a teacher with, that's not National Board Certified, so 1.3, it's almost like getting to go to an extra summer school. So, the, I went through this process as a teacher, and it, just going through the process made, not just getting the result, but going through the process improved my practice. It showed me that when I thought, you know, I was a good teacher, and I went through this and realized that, I had a lot of work to do and a lot to learn. So, we have three teachers that got, that got National Board Certification this year. Brandy Glenn is at Meridianville Middle School. She's not here tonight because she is working with her robotics team very diligently. They have a competition coming up, and she just felt like she had to be there to prep them for this, and so we said absolutely work with those students. But, uh, the other two here, and we're going to ask them to come up, and we'll all get down and take a picture with them, is Diane Marsh from Mount Carmel Elementary and Ms., Meg McGolhorn from Buckhorn High School. So, you guys come on down, and, uh, congratulations. Congratulations. Miss Marsh, congrats. Miss Bates, did you want to get any extra bragging rights since they happen to both be from your district?
Well, I would, but you know, that's so entitled sounding.
I'm sure Nathan and I'll be bragging in a little while anyway, so go right ahead.
I had no doubt they would both be from our district.
And Ms. Glenn from District 36. All right. So, thank you guys and all your hard work and dedication, and, uh, really appreciate it. And what we hope is you guys go and recruit others to apply for this and to help them through that process, because I know, I know with that process, you've got to lean on others to do that. So, it's, we're expecting you guys to give back and, uh, and help us get more as we grow this. We have a little bit shy of 30 National Board Certified Teachers in our, um, in our system. The state and the budget that passed the House, um, they actually up the, this is actually a topic I presented on, uh, to the joint budget session when I went to Montgomery a few weeks ago, and it was to increase the, uh, supplement for National Board Certified Teachers. So, they doubled it if it was in an extremely high poverty school or in what was deemed a failing school. So, we don't have any schools that fall in that classification, but I hope it was nice for the legislature to recognize that, hey, that, we need more of these, and this is something we can invest in.
Well, tell us a little bit about what they have to make an investment into it.
It does. It costs about $2,000 to apply.
Right.
And, um, there's some systems that can afford to just pay for that, but we cannot. Um, so the teachers have to pay that application fee, and we try to support them with resources and other people to kind of help connect them. There are Saturday, we, there are some Saturday tutorial sessions to kind of help. That, that sounds fun, doesn't it? And, um, so these, this is just an extremely rigorous process. You guys probably worked on this six months, eight months on this?
That's three years.
Six months, it was two years.
Three years.
Three years.
But it's, as I did over the, as they rolled out the new process. We both did the new process that just came out and rolled out.
So, the new process is in sections that you can complete, and sections, the old one, you just put in this big box, and you're like, you felt like you were mailing your, your, your baby in, in the mail, so it's hard, you know, with all these stickers, so. So, good deal. Well, I hope the new process was better, and you guys can, can help churn some, some more National Board Certified Teachers out, and I hope it was a good experience for you, so congrats. All right. Dr. Miski, are you ready?
Yes, sir. Mr. Massey asked me to present. First part of the presentation is going to be our current safety protocol and what we're doing now to kind of work with our schools, to do our, to work hard to make sure our schools are as safe as they possibly can be. The second part is, are going to be some jet suggestions and some things that we may need to look at as far as moving forward. So, to begin with, I kind of want to go over the current safety protocol, which, you know, in education, we typically have to have an acronym for everything, so the acronym, so there's four different parts to this, and this has been presented to the school administrators during our summer leadership conference, and then also presented to our teachers as well. The shelter in place, shelter in place, we had different codes in the past. We had code blue, code green, code red. The problem with codes is if you have somebody who's not as familiar with in a school, they may not understand what the code is. So, current best practice now with safety protocols is to actually provide input in what it actually is. So, shelter in place is the protected area drills, used to be called tornado drill in the past, and that is basically informing teachers, informing students to get to the designated area that they have designated for their class or for their school to come to a safe area, and typically that is for severe weather. Um, you know, we're fortunate to have a couple of our schools that do have actual shelters built within our schools. The majority of our schools, students are in the hallways or in other locations that are, been checked and approved by our chief operations officer. So, that's shelter in place. That's kind of the first protocol. Evacuate, and typically with evacuations, those are done during fire drills. So, typically evacuation is done through a fire drill where the fire alarm is pulled, and like we've done growing up, the students, students file out to a certain location, teachers do a head count, check for the evacuation. The other piece of evacuation, um, the Madison County Sheriff's Office or school resource officers, if there happens to be some type of bomb threat or threat in which we need to leave the school, that's when an actual evacuation call would be presented. The next two have to do, they're similar, but in a lot of ways, they're different. So, a lockouts. A lockout would occur if there's a situation, there may be a bank robbery down the street, there may be someone that the police are trying to apprehend, dispatch would contact our schools and tell them to put on the lockout. What lockout is, it's basically secure the perimeter. So, the building would be secure. If students are outside in the playground or outside for PE, they would be asked to come in. Inside the building, it's school is normal. So, we just run, normal school, class goes on, continues. We just, um, monitor a little bit more thoroughly who's coming in and out of the building. And we work with our, the sheriff's department, and in cases of lockout, when a deputy is available, they will provide a deputy at that door to help with parents picking up students, coming in and coming out. So, that's kind of the lockout situation, and again, that's for things that happen outside, close to the community. If, for example, if there's a bank robbery in Hazel Green, they might call the schools at Hazel Green, Moore's Mill, Meridianville, and Walnut Grove, and Lynn Fanning to go in to lockout because it's something in that area. So, again, that's just an opportunity to kind of protect without going into a full-scale lockdown. The last area is lockdown, and with lockdown, that is, in past was called a code red. So, our lockdown is when we are securing students inside the classrooms, doors are locked, locked, lights are off, and students are not visible from the windows from the outside and from the doorway. That is kind of the goal. The goal of a lockout, excuse me, a lockdown, is to make sure that, one, an intruder, if they're in the building, cannot get into any of the classrooms, whether that's the cafeteria, whether that's the gym, or if there is, it's been noticed that there's somebody outside, they'll still go into lockdown in the classrooms, but then they'll also make sure the perimeter is secure, so people can't get in and out of the buildings. So, lockdown is kind of, you have a, an intruder on campus or you have an intruder in the building. One of the things that our sheriff's department helped us out with this year, the, the safety protocol from ALIA, which is Alabama Law Enforcement Association, is to do a protocol called Run, Hide, Fight. Run, Hide, Fight is pretty much what it says. You take a look at the situation and where you are. If you're in a situation where you're outside on the playground and a lockdown is called, you have a designated area to run off campus and get to a safe place. If you are in a place in which you can get out of the building safely, again, it's, there's not a set answer which one you need to do, it's situational. The second one is hide, and that's what most of our schools typically do most of the time with lockdown, and that again, is making sure people are in a safe location, locked, away from outside the hallways but in the classrooms. And the third area is fight, and basically what they're saying there is if someone is trying to breach the door and come in your classroom, which it's a scary concept for educators, but if that's the case, you do everything in your power to fight, throw things, books, staplers, whatever you can to try to protect yourself and the students in the class. So, that's the Run, Hide, Fight protocol. Our school resource officers actually went through this protocol with all of our teachers this school year, so they did workshops at the beginning of school to kind of go through that piece. So, those are the four protocols. Are any questions on those as we?
Do we drill this protocol? Do we do?
Yes, sir. Yeah. We have a, and that's part of, um, which are virtual Alabama. We do monthly drills. Now, it's not every drill every month, but each month, schools are required to do a different type of drill. In the past, when we were going to school, it was usually, there was a monthly fire drill. Now, it's not just a monthly fire drill, but the month of October may be lockdown practice, the next month may be shelter in place practice. So, each month, there's a specific drill that schools will make sure they accomplish, and then they document that, that they've completed that process.
Are the students aware that it's either a drill or not a drill?
We ask that, would they not be told whether it's a drill or not a drill? And the main reason is we want them to act the same no matter what the situation. If you, talking with, um, the people that kind of put these protocols together, by calling it a drill, again, it relieves some stress, but then may not act the same way if the real thing happens. So, typically, if we do a lockdown, what we've asked the principals to do was follow it up with a phone call, um, and I'll get to the help of the school resource officers in a little bit about how we do our unannounced lockdowns.
Have we ever looked at what the pros and cons would be of just staying on perpetual
For the most part, our schools are on perpetual lockout.
Because the way you described it, it sounds very much like we may be reaching the expectation of.
Correct. The difference with perpetual lockout is students are not outside at that time, so, you know, we do work hard.
I realize recess still has to happen.
Yeah, recess, PE, those things outside. With our schools, our schools have the airlock doors, so we have systems in place that people need to buzz in during the schools, um, and that's something that we're going to continue to work with our schools and try to make improvements as we move forward. School resource officers. We have 10 school resource officers in our school system. Six of them are paid by our board, four of them are paid by the sheriff's department. Those resource officers, there's 10 resource officers are located, their offices are located in the high schools, so all of our high schools, and our large middle schools. So, large middle schools, Buckhorn Middle School, and Meridianville Middle School, Monrovia and Spartan Middle. That's where their office is. However, they serve all of the schools in our system. So, the school resource officers have a rotation in which they're visiting all of the schools. For example, Deputy Smith will go, he's stationed at Meridianville Middle School, but he will still visit Lynn Fanning, Moore's Mill. Again, the opportunity is for them to be visible in our schools, but we also want them to build a relationship with our kids. We want our kids to feel comfortable seeing our police officers walking in the halls, and that's kind of one of the, the pieces that's great about having a resource officer. But, the benefit and, you know, I thank you as a board for allowing us to have, put the funds and the resources towards having six school resource officers in all of our high schools. Again, having a resource officer on campus, you can't beat it. I mean, if there is an issue, the response time, it's right there, and those individuals are on campus. So, again, we have 10 resource officers and where they're housed. As far as drills and training, which we got, talked a little bit about, we do unannounced lockdowns. So, I work with, we work with the sheriff's department, we work with the school resource officers, and we have a Madison County School System Safety Team, Mr. Evans, Miss Stovall, Carrie Wilkerson, myself. We go out with the sheriff's department, and literally, I will walk into a school and say, put on lockdown now. And they need to go through the protocols of putting the school on lockdown, and then our school resource officers go through and check doors, check windows, and provide an evaluation, how they did. Once that's completed, then we sit down with the school administrators and kind of give the pros and the cons. Hey, this went really well, here's some suggestions in the future as far as improving. And what I'm going to be doing is we're going to be scheduling some additional surprise lockdowns, so principals listening, we'll be doing those here in the, in the near future. And I encourage you, and I will send you the, when we have one, I will, in your area, I will send you an email, and I encourage you to come participate in one of those with us, and just kind of get a firsthand feel of, of what it's like and what's going on. But when we go into lockdown, whether it's a drill or it's a real lockdown, everybody in the building is locked down. Our principals are locked down, our custodians, our plant managers, everybody in the entire building is in lockdown mode, um, and that's designed to make sure that we have everyone in a safe place. With the, the other thing that we have added and done a little bit more this year is we've worked with our K-9 units in Madison County, and they also, we're fortunate to have a training center right down the street, and this year, we've worked with groups from Morgan County, from Madison County, and from Tennessee who have come down, and we've actually had an opportunity to take the K-9s to different schools to do drug checks, checks on our schools. So, we've, that's something else that we have done, and we will continue to do as far as the safety protocol and what we're kind of working on now. The third thing, and something, again, we want to get a, that, this piece of information. The last couple of days have kind of been a little, I'll say hectic as a term, but it's been, I've looked at it very positive. We have had more people come forward and say, hey, I've heard this student made this threat. I heard this student made this comment, and we're able to take those pieces of information and do an investigation. We've have a couple of them that we've found exactly who the person was, and we're going to continue, if it's a legal thing, the sheriff's department takes care of it, if, and we will take care of the disciplinary part of that. But Safe to Tell is the hotline, and we're going to get this information back out on our social media sites to remind students, remind parents, this is an opportunity for you to anonymously provide information to our school system on issues that are going on. So, the Safe to Tell hotline is another great opportunity for individuals to share and let us know what's happening in our schools.
That goes straight to Brian, that's in the back. Brian, in the right, and who else gets those texts?
Every time I get a text or a phone call, I ask her to handle the situation. Callers are kept anonymous. We're single you out, and hey, it's here, called in, and reports that. We don't need to have them handle this, they've been, uh, it's something to go from two friends to the handlers on their own, and they go, we need a, they do.
And, and so to add on to that, too, with the 10 resource officers, we have, six of those are funded by the local, us locally, four of them are funded through the sheriff's department. Honestly, in our meeting today, we, it's kind of our goal, we would love to have a school resource officer in every single school we have, 28 of them. Um, you know, that's, I think, the, um, that's our goal, to get to that point. Now, to get from 10 to 28, some big steps there, but, um, but just kind of in that framework for the SROs, that's a key role, and that communication is a constant communication with them and the, and the sheriff's office on that.
Are people using this, or are they contacting the local schools?
I would say early on, they were. Now, they are, and Brian, I'm not sure how many on this, but I would say now they're more using social media to contact us, and I think there's about 10,000 people that have my phone number. Brian, do you want to kind of give, you know, an idea on how many, how many, often those come in?
Uh, yeah, on average, I probably get, uh, one tip every two weeks. Uh, in the beginning, when we first started this, I got, we got a lot of them, 10 years ago when we started this, but you're right, a lot of stuff comes in on social media now, and emails to the board, and, and stuff. But I want to add, too, this tip on is 24 hours a day, you don't have to do it during 30 hours, you know, just after, maybe 5:00, 9:00, I'll fill out the, uh, the easiest way to do it is just text. But when you do text stuff like that, there's a threat somewhere, the pertinent information would be with what school, uh, and who the players are, to be able to start investigation. You say, hey, there's a gun threat at Spartan High School, just send a text to that thing, and I don't know where to start looking at, I mean, we're just factor one, so we get people to hear that.
So, we gave posters out originally to every classroom on this. Um, I think what we'd like to do when we reboot this and push it back out is maybe even give like little business cards, so every student can have one, something like that. So, uh, so, yeah, that, so we're going to make another push on that.
To Sherri's point about the unannounced lockdown drills, uh, I was at Madison Crossroads when we did the recent one up there, and for the most part, it was pretty, it went pretty well. But when the young lady walked out of the bathroom while we were on lockdown, they're not supposed to do that. So, it was a good learning experience for her and for everybody to know, hey, you know, we had to go back in and retrain those areas. So, it is good to do that, uh, unannounced, because you want that.
And again, sometimes we get busy with the idea of school and we forget about safety, so I think bringing the safety things back up on a regular basis is important. It's important for people to know and for students to know what's going on and for teachers to, you know, as a reminder. You know, the saying recently that I've heard is, if you hear it, if you see it, please say something. So, and that's important, and that has been shown throughout this week, and I'm very proud of our school and our, our students and our communities for being able to do that. The fourth part of this current safety plan is virtual Alabama Safety Plan. It's, again, the state and education has to have acronyms for VS3, and basically, the State Department of Education, AEL, SDE, requires all schools to have a written safety plan. So, they have to have a comprehensive safety plan, which all of our schools do. As part of that comprehensive safety plan, there's a lot more details in how they do their fire drills at each school, how they do a lockdown at each school, how they do evacuations, shelter in place. I'm not going to get into the, the details for each school, but those are part of what the virtual Alabama program contains. It also contains schematics for law enforcement. So, law enforcement can log in, and they can go find where the schematics do New Market School or Buckhorn High School, so they understand what the layout is. Um, we also have those, um, with the sheriff's department, have copies of those as well, actually paper copies. The annual training and drill documentation, so as a school completes their lockdown for the month or their fire drill for the month, this is where they record and document that they have completed those drills. And then the school safety plan also has names and phone numbers in it, so if they need to get an emergency context, that's a place where they can go automatically to get those emergency contacts if they need to get for a location. So, that's the virtual Al's, um, schools program, and that's something that we work as a district, Michelle Stovall and Carrie Wilkerson have been implemental, will do, beginning of the school year, we typically have a couple workshops for the individual who's been assigned to that, to be the safety person at that school, so we go through to make sure that they have what they need. But it has everything from water and gas to electric hookups, so it's very, very detailed where, you know, what's located in that particular program. As far as moving forward, so, those are the things we kind of have in place right now. I think we can always reflect on what we're doing and kind of make progress. So, as we're moving forward, if I can get this to, look, there we go. One of the things that I'm going to recommend to the board is for us to look at a consultant to come in and give us an overview of what we're doing, give us an evaluation of how we can improve our safety protocols. I had a meeting with Chief Phillips today from the sheriff's department, and they have people within that department that they feel comfortable that could do that for us, but that'll be a superintendent and board decision if we want to use that, or if we want to get an outside agency to come in and look at that. But that's going to be a recommendation that I think we need to take a look at. Again, we see things and we have ideas on what we need to do, but having some professionals actually give us additional information may be something that we can make some, some major improvements on. Want to formalize the safety audits for our schools, and by that, I mean, when we do our debrief, when we do our, our lockdown drills, our unannounced lockdown drills, we go over the findings with the principals. But what we want to do is we want to kind of create more of a formalized plan of, these are the things that went well, these are the things that need improvement, and an actual plan of action for our school administrators to understand, okay, here's the things I need to do within the next week, here's the next things I need to do within the next couple of weeks. They actually have a formal plan moving forward. So, that's our formalized safety audit that we're going to be working on to address and try to help improve. Camera upgrades, um, it's just an opportunity, and we're going to be sharing that a little bit later on in the session, about a recommendation to provide some, request some funds to, to upgrade where we are camera-wise. And the same thing with that is kind of some intercom upgrades with speakers. Our phone systems that we, the new phone system, the new software that we have, has the capability, and we're getting this to school administrators where they can pick up the phone, dial an extension, and talk to every phone in the school, and we want to, um, we're going to be requesting some funds to be able to upgrade that and expand that out, um, to improve our communication within school.
Would you do those upgrades before you had the consultant come in and advise us, or would you?
I would like to, yeah, do them simultaneously. I mean, there are some things that we know that we need to, we need to invest in, and that's what later tonight, um, you know, I'm going to be recommending as part of our capital plan, number two item is, you know, $750,000 towards those upgrades that I'll be asking for approval late tonight, later tonight, um, on that, and, but we need to, there are things we know we can get a little bit better on right now, and, but then also, you know, if we get, we can get a review of kind of how we operate and how we enter lockdowns, or how schools laid out our point of entries, um, that are accessible and things like that, we, you know, that can be reviewed at the same time, so. So, you know, as of tonight, once, you know, I'll be asking for you guys to approve that $750,000 for us to move forward with that, we can start upgrading in those areas and, but we will do the consulting part, you know, we'll do that simultaneously.
The next piece we want to move forward with is a formal communication opportunity during a situation such as a lockdown where classes can communicate with administration and back and forth. We had an app that we had tried for the last couple of years and unfortunately it wasn't quite built to our needs. So we're in the process now of looking and trying to find a different product that may meet our needs as far as that goes. So, for example, if the teacher's in, if we're in a lockdown situation, they might be able to use their phone to be able to either start a notification of a lockdown or to provide information about everyone in their classroom is safe and accounted for, those type of things during, during the drill or during an incident. So that's something that we're working on trying to find a product or something that would work for our school system. Previous one we had was not successful. And the biggest thing is the continued collaboration with the Sheriff's Office. Having, we had a great meeting today, I had an opportunity to meet with Chief Phillips and Captain Brooks and several other of the deputies and we just had a great conversation about how we can work together and it's not, you need to do this, you need that, it's how we can work together to improve the safety in our schools. One of the things Sheriff's Department is asking their on-duty patrol officers to do is they're required to make visits now at our schools. So as they're out doing their patrols, not just going by a school, but when they go by a school, the expectation is them to stop, check in with the school, they can walk around, you know, get an understanding of the layout of the school, so they can become more familiar with what's going on in the schools. Our resource officers know our schools inside, outside. And again, we want to try to continue that relationship and they do a great job and it's been a wonderful partnership working with that group. So what questions you guys have right now?
I applaud you on a lot of the things that you have on there to move forward. One thing that I think is missing in that plan, that I realize we're in a situation in our country right now that is new to all of us, but we've got to look at a better way to communicate with our parents quickly when things like this happen. I know that it's new to all of us and I don't think any of us have ever had to consider until recently what that would look like, but I think it's time to take a real serious look at what a crisis management plan looks like and communication needs to be a big part of that piece. I don't, I know, I was going to say, I don't know about the rest of y'all, but I do. I, you know, I was there the other morning when my child cried on the way to school. I was there when my eight-year-old briefly said, Mama, it's okay because if I get shot, my teachers will be there to help me. And I'm glad that my son thinks the teachers will be okay there to help him, but I need for our community to know that they're walking into an environment where they have some, just reassurance that we're there for them, too, that we're there for every parent and student and that we are going to bake an effort to give the communication that our community needs to feel like they're safe. I'm well aware of the fact that we will never, ever be safe from a crazy person, but we need to know that their plan is in place and that the process going forward will reassure us of that.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
I just would hope that as we do go forward with this communication piece, that, you know, you'll listen, that we will listen to parents.
Absolutely.
That have, you know, they're, they're at, you know, on the line and as we were talking about earlier, you know, the kids are already texting or whatever, Snapchatting, whatever they do quickly, you know, what's going on. And, you know, they've got to know that when they get that message from the school, that they can trust in that because, and, you know, I don't know how that works, but we have to make that work. I can't imagine the panic when, you know, if you hear this on the news or you don't, or you get this message from your child, you're in lockdown, whatever, and, you know, we've got to be the ones giving them the information, so.
I think that went better this week, on the event to happen this week.
Yeah, I think we've improved within the last 48 hours.
If I can add, we improved throughout the week. We started out in a situation in which we needed to communicate more quickly and that was our Buckhorn situation. As we move, progress throughout the week, I will, I feel we've taken the feedback that we've gotten from parents in the community and tried to work on making those improvements throughout the week and the different issues that have come up, but that was one in which we fell a little bit short on, actually a lot bit short on.
Yeah, we learned, you know, from Tuesday, just the expectation of, hey, if you have information, pass it on rather than, you know, how we may have perceived two weeks before, it's a different world than it was two weeks ago. And honestly, how we operated Tuesday, we immediately made changes and on Wednesday, we had two different instances at two different schools where learning from what happened Tuesday, we changed protocol and on Wednesdays, we made immediate calls out to parents during the school day as soon as we learned that information this morning at 7:00 with my, you know, with my kids at the breakfast table, made, or I guess it was about more like 6:40, we made the call out to the Sparkman parents just because of a perceived threat, but it was in Ohio, but it was, it started spreading on social media, this could be Sparkman and we sent out, hey, this is what we know, but this is where it's at. And again, you know, we dealt with it again in the middle of the day today at one of our other middle schools where it's turning that information around. So, you know, and a lot of folks here, you know, are here because of how Tuesday, we didn't probably do it the way we needed to and we listened and we learned and we're going to continue to grow and be better and constantly to fine tune it. What we don't want to do is necessarily get locked into a way how we're always going to do it and be rigid about it. So I think we need to be flexible and responsive and always strive to improve that communication. And a lot of times while we're communicating that, the investigation is ongoing and their investigation is still ongoing right now, but, you know, we can, parents want to know that, if the investigation's ongoing, let us know. And so that's what we're going to start doing.
The protocol may be changed, I don't know, maybe you haven't processed it yet, but from that incident in Florida because the fire drill, all those kids out in one's way, so is there any thought about how that works?
There's a.
If I can jump in here and Cindy makes a little help, what happens when a fire drill occurs in a lockdown? So what we're kind of seeing is what I think happened in Florida is folks are kind of seeing what happens when you do something and they're, obviously he did that to plan his escape with the fire alarm to get out. So, you know, we kind of have a protocol on what our kids do when a fire alarm hits during lockdown, they don't, they don't go, they stay, you know, that actually, so it happens. But again, some of those kind of things specifically on the training, you know, when, when it's specific safety, again, we don't, we, we might need to discuss some of that in executive session if we get into specifics of that, just, you know, you know, is, you got to be careful about showing kind of what potential weak areas or potential things that we really worry about that we're trained for and we're working on it, but it's, so it's kind of a thing of how much do you discuss in a public setting and how much do you let folks know? So we're, we're finding that balance and we want to be transparent on it. But there, we have considered scenarios, if you're in a lockdown and you have a fire alarm go off at the same time, so we're, we constantly review the pros and cons of that.
And that kind of goes back to if you know it's a drill or not. I mean, a fire drill is one thing, if it's not a drill, it could be another thing.
Well, you wouldn't initiate a drill in the middle of lockdown.
One can lead to the other.
You could.
You could be in a drill and have a lockdown, but you wouldn't initiate a drill.
We don't. We, if you're in a lockdown, there's a fire alarm's pulled, understand.
Stay put.
What I'm thinking about is your fire alarm's pulled, you're not in a lockdown because you don't know there's a threat.
Right.
But then if you respond to the drill, the fire drill, all of a sudden, you do have a threat.
Right. Well, if there's a fire alarm and there's no lockdown, then, then they'll do the evacuation procedures.
And then if somebody's outside ready.
Yeah. And that, and also, we, you know, we go through those scenarios that are not really the specifics of pros and cons that I would have discussed.
You don't, I mean, you don't want, you don't want to desensitize to a fire alarm when you're not in a lockdown situation. I mean, you still want the kids to react to a fire alarm the same way they would in a non-lockdown situation. You want to make sure that they go through the same process. I don't know how to fix that, I don't know what the solution with that would be, but you still want them to evacuate the building because you don't know if it's a fire alarm drill or if there really is a fire someplace.
It's the probability of a fire versus another situation, one seems to be more heavily than the other, I guess.
Well, it's kind of like 9/11, do you jump or stay or, I mean, you're basically in that same situation. I think one thing that would help give us more control in that situation is the intercom system because you would be able to immediately make an announcement as to what the issue was and what the direction would be that you should go in.
Yes.
And so I think students being aware to be, or knowing to be aware and to listen and to respond accordingly is what is important to emphasize.
Matt, as far as communication goes, it's one thing to communicate when you have a known threat, for the lack of a better term, the Buckhorn incident, that's, that's an incident, but when there is an active, when there's an active incident going on in a school, what is the procedures, and we need to talk about this later if we can, but what is the procedures for the school to get that information? Does it come here and then you guys are charged with that or how does that work?
Yeah, it is to take care of the situation and make it secure. So we're contacting law enforcement, we're, they're contacting us and we're trying to secure that student or that situation. Once we have that secured, then we're sending out the call as quickly as possible.
But do all the schools have a procedure, and that's maybe something we need to look at, do all the schools have a procedure across the board that it's standardized that someone's going to have the rose pinned on them in that school to make that phone call to the central office, we've got a situation going on, we need to get this information out. Because like Mary Louie said, I mean, the kids are already texting this stuff out, so before we can even get anything out, it's already out there in the blogosphere and the, and the social media.
So calls out, or either they're going to come from the principal or me, I made the call about Buckhorn yesterday afternoon at about 2:00, I think, this morning, I made the call for Sparkman, not at Sparkman High School. Today during the day, Sparkman Middle School Principal handled it. Yesterday during the day, Central Principal handled it. Yesterday during the day, Madison County High School Principal handled it. But we knew and we worked with them on crafting kind of that. So we're, you know, we used to, now with, if an administrator's going to send something out, we're, we're looking at what they're sending out and probably more than before, we're trying to add as much detail as we can while still complying with the advisement under law enforcement because, you know, that honest, the first message that we posted that Tuesday night, late Tuesday night, when the information started spreading on social media late that night, we opted to not make a call at 9:15 PM, but we made a social media post. It wasn't specific, it was kind of at the suggestion of law enforcement, just say, hey, we know, we're aware. Because at that point, people didn't know we knew and so it was just kind of like, hey, we know this, we're working on it. We didn't want to say we had it handled, but we felt like we did. But at that point, we were still, there wasn't concrete evidence, it was a lot of third-hand, fourth, fifth-hand information. So, you know, we're kind of feeling that out, but if it is active during a school day and something's happening, we got, the top priority is to address that situation and, and control it and then communicate to the parents as soon as we can, you know, it.
So is there a consistency with the communication piece? So, you know, as part of this plan, I think we have, we may be missing a piece there, where do the families know what to expect?
I think in the last, again, Wednesday and Thursday, we basically re-initiated the new strategy and it was very consistent Wednesday and Thursday. How we address these things changed after Tuesday.
Sure.
All right, and probably through half the day on Wednesday. So, you know, we learned.
Because you went from posting it on social media to a phone call.
Well, we posted on social media because it was late, very late, we got it, but the threat wasn't, at that point, wasn't by the Sheriff's Office, you know, we'd already made contact with the family and felt like it was, it was handled, so we decided not to make, you know, an all call late that evening. In retrospect, we would go back and do that, so, and we, or make a call early the next morning. It was during the middle of that day and honestly, when I made the call out to the Buckhorn Middle, Buckhorn High School parents associated there, that was the time where we said, that afternoon about 1:00 or 2:00, it's like, okay, we're going to, we're going to make sure we stay in front of this and keep people updated and we may be sending out a call, making them aware and send out another call and getting them updated. So, so it was at that point that we, we said, you know what, we needed to do that and honestly, there were a couple other situations happened during that day on Wednesday that had, we told direct the principals, you need to make a call to all your parents right now. Once, once it's secure, make the call. And so that's, that's kind of where we're at now because that's the, you know, the expectation is that's honestly the world that we think we're living in now is that, because people can simulate information so quickly, they're looking for that call from the principal or they're looking at a call from me. And so we have to be ready, you know, to do that.
Well, I think, I think it's important that we regularly meet with our families and explain the process of protocols, what to expect if something were to happen, even as far as, and this is part of the crisis plan, what, if there is an incident, which we hope doesn't happen, what's your, what's the expectation of the parent? Do you come directly to the school? Those conversations need to be had with our families because they, they're going to just run, I know I would, I mean, if it happened at Burneville Middle School, I'm going straight to the school, I'm not asking any questions.
That's right.
We need to explain to our families what the plan, what the protocols are and do we have a plan in place to really communicate effectively with those families.
And, and we're going to have to almost advise folks even how to talk to the kids about this, too. You know, my, my son, once he got to school on Tuesday at Buckhorn Middle School, he, he texts me to let me know, why didn't you tell me, you know, we were going through this? And I was like, well, we wanted to sit there, if we thought it wasn't safe, we would have closed school. And so, I mean, how even talk to our kids and have these conversations that we probably never dreamed that we would have these, these type of conversations with, you know, with children, we, we've got to start having, so that, you're right.
And so.
I made some notes on what you were talking about, so you could kind of look at, look at what our plan is and to make sure that we have an appropriate plan moving forward with the administration and education. Also, I agree, I think what you could, what I'm moving forward with would be that, I mean, parent education as far as what the protocols are, how it works, those kind of things, I think we need to.
Now, Nashville City had a way of monitoring social media. A formalized one, now they don't, but ours is simply informal, I mean.
They, they actually hired, they, before they had a staff of a half dozen to 10 people that literally just monitored social media posts of students. I think what we have right now, which we don't, you know, have the discretionary funds that they do to be able to do that, honestly, but what we have, and that's what in our messages now, we're almost, in the email messages, I know that the Madison County, now we're trying to kind of put if you see something, say something type of thing, is that we now have, you know, 19,000 students and their families are now being hawks on social media and so much so, they're even kind of pulling things from Ohio down that, that just use the same acronym letters, but that's okay. You know, the sheriffs were quick to investigate, you know, those posts last night, they just mentioned SHS and a threat and it was an SHS in either Oregon or Ohio, but they, they quickly investigated that and we, we were able to debunk that. That is, that's what we want. We want that vigilance and we welcome that. And so, you know, we don't have a staff, a team that does that, but, you know, that Safe to Tell number is, is, people need to know that, you know, because in the middle of the night, you know, when I called Brian, nights running together, it may have been last night at 11:15 or something, I mean, he'll answer. So, you know, that's, in fact, I talked with two parents from Sparkman last night about 11:30, who, you know, they, you know, saying we need to talk, call me, please, and so we, they are, they're getting this. And so different people get the information at different times and we were initially responding to a lot of messages, hey, we got to just, you know, this is not Sparkman. But I said, you know, we got to make a call first thing in the morning. So, we don't have a team hawk. make a call first thing in the morning. So we don't have a team hawk, hawking that, but it's, it's really up to us, our community and family, you know, you guys to advocate for yourselves. That's why you're here tonight and we're going to ask you guys to keep doing that. And we want to be here to answer those calls we have.
Well, I know we're going to talk about the, the cameras and the other things you mentioned, but I asked, you know, is it, is it, is it prudent for us to think about having that assessment? I know we, we think we need to do it. For sure, we need to do something. But there may be some things we're not considering. So, you know, whether it be a full-time safety officer at central office that manages the old safety apparatus in Madison County, some things that we're not even thinking about, but we're just going to put those cameras out there. We're going to do the, which is, which may need to be done. But I wonder if we need to get this assessment, and I'm sure we'll talk about this more, but, you know, do this assessment and see if, are there some things that, that we need to do. Of course, with the Madison County Sheriff's Office, they had to consult. There's other resources in, in the area that, that probably be willing to help us as well. FBI, ATF, I would imagine we have other opportunities to get people involved to help us in this process.
Well, I, I could go into specific reasons why we have the needs for the cameras and the P-8 speakers. I would rather do, tell those stories in executive session, but overall, that is an incredible need that, you know, any expert will recommend. So...
Sure.
I'm really okay. If we want to go to executive session and discuss some specific instances of why we need those and instances that don't happen, that, you know, it's...
Is that every school, every, it's the same thing, or is it just filling in the holes?
Well, so high schools probably have a little bit of a different package of needs than elementary because in high schools, you have students that park in cars. So maybe, you know, so, you know, we're thinking of a comprehensive plan for all of our schools. Because it was really up to our schools to spend their own local money through fundraising or whatever on cameras. And some might go to Best Buy and buy some cameras. Some might order them from this company. And as they needed servicing, our folks necessarily couldn't service them because, you know, they can't be experts at all these different kinds of cameras and how they store video and that kind of thing. So, so we are...
But cameras are good. And I, but do cameras keep kids safe? I guess my question is, do we need to, do we need to look at it more comprehensively than just cameras and intercom systems and that be it? You know what I mean?
Absolutely, we need to do that. Yes. And, and, well, no, and we can talk about the, that expert if we want to hire a full-time person or do we want to hire a consultant? I know I've already been reached out by Homeland Security Tonight, ATF Director, got a letter from him. He's willing to lend us support. FBI, all these folks are local, these experts. You know, we're, we will, we can use them. We can contract with them. We can open a position and make it a full-time thing if that's, you know, a discussion you guys are prepared to have tonight. But we can, you know, we definitely need to be able to do that. But there, this was put on the capital plan, you know, back, I actually made the recommendation two years ago to the board to use some of the BRAC funds to cover about $300,000 in upgrades. Because two years ago when I came in, we have doors where you could just walk straight in, the front door, and the offices are off to the side. And we had one of our schools where the teacher came back from lunch and there were two adults in her classroom who were wanting to confront the teacher. They happened to go in their own classroom. And we kicked them out, but they walked, because the way it was in, they didn't notice. And so I came back and made the recommendation because that, those funds were, you know, set for whatever for the new school. It didn't pass. But, you know, that's basically where we're at now and we need a bigger investment.
Is that...
At that time, it was 300. And we kind of threw, we did a fundraising effort, kind of through donations from different groups and things. And we were able to get those buzzers on doors and a lot of our exterior doors. That was kind of the first priority is we got to secure our entrances. And it took us a while to be able to do that because we didn't have the funds straight up. But Mr. Evans worked really hard to kind of help schools find ways to do that economically. But it wasn't until a month ago till we got buzzers on just the front doors coming in these, this office, just to open the doors. I mean, it, there, you know, there are ways. We've got, we've got some catching up to do, honestly. And it's going to take a big investment to do that. That's, that's the basic package stuff. And the, the next level things is I think where that consultant can come in and, and help too. But he can also, you know, help advise us with, you know, as we go through that process, too. And again, we've been consultants. The things that, that are in the capital plan here, that came, you know, from working with the sheriff's office, going through lock, drill lockdowns and drills from lockdowns. So that was, as a result of those debriefs that we've had, they, they've come to us and are like, you need this. This is lacking. And so it is a, it's a hole that we have and we need, there's no reason to wait to do those things that are widely needed right now. And that, and this is not a blank check. We'll, we'll come back with recommendations and bids for you guys to put these packages out. And we'll be able to, be able to go into detail on exactly what that is. What, what you guys will be approving tonight is to allow us to start, to start that process to finding these solutions and seeking bids for that because we can say, hey, we have funds to do this now. Let's, let's get going on it. So that's kind of what, that's what we'll be asking for tonight.
So the cameras are going to be monitored? So people are really watching the cameras? Or are they just to capture?
Well, they all record. A lot of times, Cindy, just stop me if I get too detailed on, on do this. But when we had the lockdown here at the central office, SWAT came up. They're walking through the buildings with ARs and, you know, and it was an incredibly tense situation. There was word of a call that they saw somebody walking. You know, the call came in, somebody was walking with a gun in the back of the trees. And they were, hey, can you, let's pull up the video of that. So, I mean, it, when you don't have video cameras here on this campus to do that, and I say it because this is our campus here, you know, there's, we get in the debrief and they're sitting, you know, it's hard to defend to SWAT team, the sheriff's office, while we don't have that when we have, so that would be some of the basic things. That's just one scenario. I'd rather not go through the other scenarios at schools of how we, you know, again, cameras are not necessarily going to stop something from happening, but it can help you to, that would have helped us move forward in that situation. Instead, we stayed in a lockdown, which was a hoax. There wasn't anybody walking around. But it took, we searched every nook and cranny of this whole campus. We walked through the woods and through everything else. And so having, having those resources will help us. It will help law enforcement. There, the way they do it now is kind of like home security cameras where you can, other people be able to access those. Police department could access that from their department and to be able to see things. So that's the kind of systems that we're looking at. Thank you, Dr. Miski. Any other questions on that? I'm sure we can talk about that. We can have a whole separate work session probably on that or even a board training on those things. Just one of the things, we go to these state and national conferences with law enforcement together and, and hear from experts and stories and, and things that we need to do. This is an everyday thing of that we look at and try to get better. And obviously with the events last week, it is making it, there's no more, we've got to put full steam ahead and, and even find ways to improve in every aspect of it. Okay, I'm going to move on to administrative actions unless there's any other comments. I recommend approval for the financial statement, payments of bills and cash reports for December of 2017.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion regarding the financial statement? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 I recommend approval revisions to the Madison County Board of Education Child Nutrition Program and Charge Meals Policy.
Motion.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. I'm assuming there's some discussion, what has changed?
Yes. So, is Barb here?
Because we didn't get this until...
Yeah. So, part of it was, we had a policy that was approved years ago where students couldn't be charged a meal and they weren't able to eat their lunch. They literally had to leave it there. This is going to allow, kind of in essence, to kind of change, it's a, it's a board policy. So that is going to allow students to eat when they may not have money that day. And it is, the stories I would hear where kids necessarily couldn't eat, necessarily on the free reduced lunch program, but that doesn't need to happen. We don't, and it, and so we've worked to kind of change the wording in that. So I think they may have the old policy and the new policy in there.
It's in there.
With the old policy, they were allowed to charge from K through A, two meals and that was it. And then they were given alternate meal and shame and meals taken. And so with the new policy, there's no threshold as far as how many times they can charge. And it goes through 12th grade, too. But C and P, I want everybody to understand, will continue to attempt to collect funds. It's not that the principal and the administrators will be contacted daily about who owes and what that debt is. However, there's no threshold as far as a maximum that can be charged. We would hope that we're not charging during the month of May so everything can be collected and reconciled. At that time, students in K through A would still receive an alternate meal during the month of May. But the school is responsible, and I know Dr. Met with the principal, we discussed this with them, shared it. The school, they don't necessarily recharge meals or any, money's not collected or alternate, alternative meals. The system can't use child nutrition funds or federal program funds to cover that. So it's the responsibility of the principal, the local school, to cover those meals where monies aren't collected. However, they're already doing that. And just wanted to know, it's not necessarily from the school's general fund, but in many instances, PTA funds and other areas are, ways are covering this. But we will still attempt, just like we have been, to collect from the parents first. And, but it's just so that we're no longer...
Denying them.
Denying meals, shaming a child. I mean, there's no set limit on the number of charges. But we still absolutely will be collecting those in a reasonable time period, working with the local schools.
I can't remember what the name of that automated thing was. It's been a couple of years.
Paypams.
Paypams. So is that not, is that not required for everybody to do so for lunches?
No.
No. Okay.
You can write a check and pay for your meals and put money on the counter.
Believe it or not, not everybody has internet access.
Well, I just was curious. Didn't know.
Yeah, it's interesting. If y'all look at the original policy, it was approved in 1990. So I think we can be a little more progressive.
So the principals in general are, are good with this?
They understand what's going on.
This gives them a little more...
That's different.
Yeah.
I didn't have anyone who was, as I said, absolutely not. I guess I'll put it that way. I mean, to tell you that, hey, we're going to be responsible for charging your school account, you know, a principal, I don't...
Do any schools have a fund that, where those kids who...
A lot of our schools have a, PTO have a special fund. We call it the can or the jar. When I was principal at Newmarket, where from time to time I threw 20, 40 dollars in the can. And when the child didn't have money, we'd, they pulled the money from there to make sure a child had a chance.
And we don't try to recoup that from the payment?
Well, typically, I would just end up calling the parents, say, hey, if you had charged a day, can you, when you get a chance, if you can send that money in, they're out of lunch money. It's as simple as that.
And remember, these are kids that are on paid status. These are not our free or reduced, you know, these are our paid status kids. It's like any other collection or fee.
But did I hear you say, for the most part, we're already letting them go above the two lunch limit, or we are not?
No, we are not.
Okay.
But we're already providing them an alternative, an alternate meal.
A lot of our schools, especially the elementary schools, have an alternate system already in place.
So what this would do is just make it to where it's not the bag with peanut butter and jelly sandwiches?
Correct.
Exactly. If we're going to do that anyway, they need it to give them the meal, the reversible meal.
We're taking it out of our policy now that it's only two.
Yeah, that's correct.
And we're opening up to high schools because previously they, no...
Pre-K eight.
We're not sending no, seeing they're unlimited charges, right?
They can't charge all card, which would just increase the debt with the students and the parents. And of course, adults can't charge.
Should we have like an upper limit so that principals don't end up having massive problems with this?
I think it'll be okay.
So ten, maybe ten or eight or something. I mean, it gives them a chance to have a payday or whatever the problem is.
We would still have the same issues we're having now with two. We would still be denying children.
It's still, it's the principal's responsibility to kind of monitor those charges. So, I mean, if it's...
And when it gets out of hand, they could look at that. They, they receive a list daily or will receive a list daily as they are now as to the charged meals by individual students.
What would you think? I guess my question was, what would, if you think of an upper level limit, what would that, no idea, what do you think, in your opinion?
Well, do you, do you charge them for the peanut butter and jelly sandwiches?
No.
No.
Okay. So then it would limit, a person can only incur 20 dollars worth of these issues instead of from now until May. And then you, you go till in May and it's $100 and I got you going to get it. I mean, it would just limit the exposure to the principal.
Well, I think you're, at, at some point, when you limit lunches, in my opinion, you're, you're punishing the child, not the parent who hasn't paid.
But you're giving them more than two days. You're giving them a period of time. It, that's time enough to figure out a resolution.
The two is the two meals that may be charged.
Yeah.
Yeah. So instead of two, they would get maybe a week's worth or eight days' worth. And then if they're still not paying up, there might be a problem that is not going to get resolved.
The problem is the child doesn't eat. And, and the C and P cannot pay for the alternate meals. They're not allowed to pay for those. So we're still, we'd be billing the school for those. And remember, these are paid status families.
They'll use, like if some high schools, if they're not in good standing, they'll be like, okay, well, before you go to prom, you've got to pay your balance. I mean, it's just like if you have a library kind of overdue thing. I mean, there, there's ways that they can look like. I do understand the concern of, are they going to rack up $500?
Yeah. I mean, that's...
Well, your principals aren't going to let that happen.
Well, it's almost impossible. They go to school 180 days.
I don't know. I don't have any personal experience with it, but it kind of puts the principal on the hook. I mean, we got to either come up with the money or, or to stop, stop the problem. I mean, it's one of the two.
I think the conversation would be, the principal goes, does this child need to be on free, free reduced lunch? You know, and have that. Because a lot of times, our, it's interesting, our feeder schools, you know, the elementaries always have a higher free reduced lunch rate than middle schools. And theirs is higher than high schools. And it's almost like students are more reluctant to even turn those forms in. And so I think if, if something like that happens, that's a red flag. There's some other things going on, you know, at home or even maybe they need to apply. So I don't think that would be a prevalent thing. I think it almost, you know, it still would be the principal's responsibility to, maybe when they, in their mind, when it gets $25 over, we're going to have a conversation and go, hey, what's going on here? So that, that would be, what this does say is it's, it allows the principal to kind of, whether it's a soft limit of when we're going to have a conversation on there, but, but it still allows the child to eat.
And we can put in a dollar, man. That's what the board wants to do.
You know, we were just chatting. The board, you know, if they're wanting a, a limit, if you look at a $50 limit, that's basically a month's worth of lunch, $50.
And I'd like to see how this works. Principals have a relationship with their families. I don't think this will be a problem. I think if there is a problem, then they'll identify it and they'll be able to work something out. If we see this doesn't work after a year, we can come back to it.
Yeah. The problem now is we got kids not eating.
Right. And I think we're still in the kid business, aren't we?
Mm-hmm. Okay. So I'd like to leave the recommendation as, as is on that.
Is there any further discussion or question? We do have a motion and a second on the recommendation for the C and P policy update. There's no further discussion or question. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 I recommend the board award the bid for the Owens Crossroads Roofing Project to Standard Roofing Montgomery Incorporated for 1.129 million dollars.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion regarding the Owens Crossroads Roofing Bid?
Is this reflected?
I know Carrie's not here, but they've resolved the issue with the, with the gym mat to be able to, this bid, this bid covers the issues they had with the gym wall and all of that.
Yes.
of that.
Yes.
There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. On item B, this is, I recommend approval of a capital plan for item two to be funded for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for security upgrades.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
What's the funding source?
Funding source will be the BRAC funds.
Why would you do that?
The funds are there for capital, and therefore are the needs of the school, and we don't have a bigger need right now.
We have other reserves.
We have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for capital improvements out of a pot of forty-three million right now, and that's less than two percent of those funds that, this is number two priority that the board has approved, this capital plan in November. And I'm asking for these things to be funded.
You can fund them other ways.
But we can, but it's listed here to be funded with capital, and we have the capital funds there. So I mean, the intent is to use the BRAC funds for, we can fund the first thirty or so items of the capital plan, so I'm asking to...
Cindy, do we put ourselves in legal problems, or...
I'd be happy to discuss that with you in executive session, but I can't discuss that with you in public.
Well, we just sent off on February eighth, something to the, I think this is to the DOJ, that says exactly the opposite of what you're recommending. I don't know if I'm reading that right, but...
Those documents are confidential as far as the negotiations in the desegregation case.
This was about fourteen days ago, so I don't think, I don't think we need to take these funds. There's other funds that we can take, we can use, but these, these we should not.
I would like to agree with Mr. Curry. I agree that we need multiple safety upgrades in our system. But I also agree that we need to make sure that we are being, I don't want to use the word progressive, but we are in a new era, and I think we need experts who are capable of, or who have seen these types of incidences in the past, and that can give us the best alternate, not alternatives, but the best, the gold standard for keeping our kids safe. I agree that Mr. Wilkinson does a great job. I think that we bring back great things from safety conferences. But I don't think on a national level at a safety conference for schools, we are up to speed with the type of environment that we're dealing right now. I don't think we ever knew that we would have to be. And I think that we've got to make sure that we have a consultant that is saying how we best need to spend this money to get the most amount of consistent, safe environment provided to our students and our teachers, as well as our parents when they are in the building. I don't disagree that a lot of the things that were on Dr. Minsky's plan probably are classic things that need to be done for our other safety issues. You know, we need intercoms in order to get through tornadoes and the things that we've all been used to dealing with. I think that we do need some of those other things that he discussed in that plan. I think that plan is good, but I think that if we are going to move forward with this in tandem, we have got to have a consultant that can let us know whether we are now at our best effort. I would suggest that we have some sort of ad hoc, or perhaps subcommittee, that includes the sheriff's department as well as a consultant, and I would make the suggestion that we have one of our board members available for those meetings. I think that at this point, in order to move forward, we need to have that representation from our community that says what our stakeholders' expectations are, and not just what we think works well in schools. I think they need to know what, where our level of expectation is, and I think that is our responsibility as board members to provide that information to whomever is making these decisions, whether that's the sheriff's department with a consultant, or whether that is our directors. I think we're at the level of participation now, where we've got to be all in, and that includes giving our stakeholders communication at the appropriate level. I don't have a problem with us moving forward, things like intercom, and like I said, the classic things that we need to keep safe from our everyday environmental issues that we all know we experience in Alabama, or across the country in general, fire drills, that sort of thing. But I think to start looking at whether or not we are basically safe as we can be from things that we never imagined we'd have to deal with, I think that we've got to go to the next level and make sure that we are using funds to get an appropriate consultant who works in conjunction with our local sheriff's department, and that we are available to give that input from a stakeholder standpoint.
So do we do the consultant, it doesn't matter, I'm just saying, do we do the consultant prior to...
I think that there are some things we could go ahead and, for instance, the intercom system.
Correct.
I don't think anybody would disagree that we need to be able to immediately contact every person in a building.
And outside.
Yes. Working in a large hospital, I know exactly what it means to be able to know immediately where we're at. Because our intercom didn't work for a month. We had another special phone, and it was very annoying. But that being said, I think that what we can do is give that consultant and our sheriff's department and this committee the budget of what we have available, and what can we do that systematically creates a consistent approach. Because if our kids are somewhere else, if we've got a team of kids that are over at the tech center for the day, they need to know that the exact same thing happens there. And I get that we will never make our buildings consistently the same, and that's probably a good thing, because if nothing else, it keeps a shooter from knowing exactly how to go through our buildings. But I think they need to know that when A happens, B happens, and when B happens, I know to be aware for C. And if we're not doing that, then we're not providing our children the education that they need to move forward in this type of environment. One of the main things I told my daughter that day was, the biggest thing you can do is be aware of your surroundings, and make sure you know where you are and how to get out if it happens. And I don't think, unfortunately, that any of us have been prepared to tell our students that, but we're at that day and age where we've got to make sure our kids know that I'm sorry, but we're not safe anymore unless we're completely aware at every moment of the day that we are in public. And that's just how I feel.
Well, I can be ready to come back with a recommendation and a contract for a consultant next month.
Because we couldn't use, we couldn't hire a consultant with this money.
Correct.
This would just be for capital things.
That's just for capital improvements.
Well, I think before we go spend a lot of money on a consultant, we ought to consider the resources we have, perhaps for free. I mean, we have a lot of FBI presence here and the other things you mentioned, so you may have enough expertise, practically, without going and spending a lot of money.
Oh, and I'm fine if somebody wants to volunteer.
We have, we have resources for sure.
I mean, I'm not saying we have to get somebody from, you know, North Dakota that specializes in Iraq war, but I'm saying that we do need to look at what a consultant could do for us, whether that costs money or not, and whether we use a local consultant. I'm not, I mean, we have an arsenal.
Literally.
For real. Surely there's somebody on there that knows how to protect a campus.
Sitting in the back row.
Yeah. He's rather tall looking.
So, you know, we can begin, again, we can, we can come back with some options for you guys, and again, we, this is not spending any money with this vote. Again, those bids have to come back to you, and even hiring a consultant will come back to you.
Yeah.
That, what this does is it allows us to start seeking those solutions.
I just want to make sure we've got the highest possible. I mean, if my doorbell can go to my phone nowadays, surely we can do something better in our schools than a buzzer.
That's right.
Feeling a little emotional.
So I just have one question. If we're going to use the BRAC funds for this, this would be an approved item for the people who oversee the BRAC funds?
Yes. And I've had, you know, again, conversations today and yesterday, and indications from them, we feel good about this is moving forward in this direction.
I think...
Did you say you can't answer that?
She can't. I thought she was up with the BRAC people.
And this doesn't even describe what we've been talking about, because there's nothing about cameras on this description.
Yeah, and it's, and there does list in there, but the security upgrades, cameras are considered capital with that, and again, the, it's a capital item that we're following with the security upgrades.
It says, "Security upgrades for safety glass, key card control access, and intercom paging." It says nothing about cameras.
All right. Well, I'll make an edit and go ahead and add cameras to that, then, not because that's the, a lot of the, even the paging system, the cameras running, running through the wiring, we'll use the same wires.
You're going to have to come, you're going to have to come back to us with bids and a plan. I mean, I think the intent would be to go ahead and authorize the funds, but not to spend the funds until we have a comprehensive review of what we need in our schools to keep them and to keep the schools and the kids safe in the schools, whether we use our resources out at the arsenal, or whether we hire somebody to come in and do it, or a combination there of the two. So I mean, what we have here is, I get it, but I think it's security upgrades, period, and we authorize the funds, and then we don't spend anything until we get that comprehensive review.
So would you like, and we can, we can go through and just go security upgrades and eliminate the rest of the wording?
I think that's, yeah, I think that would be better, because we don't know what the security upgrades need to be at this point. It might, it might be safety glass and key card controlled access, but it may not be. That may not be the priority that the experts tell us to do.
And what we do in the business office, whatever project is approved, we submit that to the state, where the BRAC funds have been issued, the bond have been issued on our behalf. They assign a project number to it, and they reimburse us when we submit invoices. So that's how it works in the business office. That's why, you know, we submit everything, project by project.
But we have a lot of reserves, and you can speak more than I can, but in the special revenue, there's what, two, two point seven million that we could spend out of there without using the BRAC funds?
No, ma'am, not special revenue. It would either come from any reserves we have in the general fund.
Well, you can move them to general fund. You can move those funds to general.
Special revenue funds are our federal programs and our local school funds.
So you don't have any C and P extra in your special revenue?
We have, yes, ma'am, we do. And we can, just like we did last year, we pulled back a million in the spring. If we see that we're well over the reserve for C and P requirements, we absolutely can move those.
We're already over it, right? Because you only need a million over there? We've got three.
That's local school fund. That's not just C and P. I can give you, I can share with you what C and P's reserve is right now, and I'm sure it's over the one month, and we can move those in.
So we have those funds. Then we have a million C and P sitting in general fund already, right?
Correct.
And then we have the textbook money in general. So we don't have to go pull BRAC funds right now, I don't think.
But what happens if we need, what happens if the boiler at Sparkman High, just like the boiler at Hazel Green went out, we could use, we would have that, those C and P funds and other funds to use to fund that?
We have this for capital needs. Why would you not use it for capital?
Because you have an agreement with the county commission that you haven't resolved, that you just told the DOJ that you were going to work out and get approval to get other projects approved, and you haven't done that. So you have a legal agreement that the board committed to that you haven't resolved. That's why you wouldn't use the BRAC vote.
We have, this allocates using the BRAC funds for this. This is not spending any of those funds yet. That's still going to come back to you guys for approval, but the board already moved in a direction that was away from that agreement back in November. So this is just moving another step towards actually keeping our kids.
So you just told the DOJ, at this point, the board has asked the county commission to enter.
Ms. Parker, I'd ask you not to re-adopt that I was filing through confidential negotiations.
I have a motion, or I would appreciate a motion to move to executive session now that we have brought up threatened litigation in our, in our communication.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move to executive session after we have now approached a pending litigation communication.
And I do have a certification with me.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Ladies and gentlemen, we'll move to executive session. We will return to continue the remainder of the agenda. We will return to continue the remainder of the agenda.
To be a little more gentle this time.
I want to...
Hold on, I got to call it back in session. The Madison County Board of Education regular session is called back to session.
Okay. With this recommendation, I do want to amend it that with this recommendation, it will come with the inclusion of a committee to be formed and select an expert to come and review the system safety protocols and facilities. And with that, we'll be funding item two on the capital plan.
We had a motion and a second, which we probably need to withdraw before we...
So I withdraw my original motion?
And I withdraw my second.
There you go.
We have a new recommendation?
It's for a new recommendation, as said.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we had some other questions that we wanted to... You had a question that...
Well, there's a list of items on here, and the amount's 750, so I was just wondering how we came up with...
Yeah. So the 750 number, again, it was 300,000 back in... For Sullivan, what was that recommendation made?
2015.
Dan and David and Jeff are still on board.
April 2015, security measures of 300,000. August 2015, security measures of 400,000.
So with that, as we've gone through, and some of those have been able to resolve, but we've also kind of seen a bigger need. So this will be a system-wide effort with that. And we thought that we could accomplish some of those basic needs and some that are mentioned in more detail there. But again, that may change pending what this review team and expert give us.
Yeah, this is probably just a start. I mean...
Yeah. Should we make it more generic? Since that's the whole point of getting the...
Yeah, I would like to... And in that, let me make that clear with this recommendation is just going to be security upgrades with that. And we'll just leave off the details that is currently on there.
We do need to determine who will form that committee. Be happy to take volunteers. I would make the suggestion that we include the school liaison officer from the arsenal, as well as the gentleman who has volunteered in the back of the room, Mr. Sisson. I hope I said that right, due to his experience level. And I think we can start there, as well as a board member, if anyone or two...
I'd be willing to.
I think unfortunately, all of us would like to be part of it. We can't have quorum. But if Dave and Nathan would like to continue forward, I can get you Ms. Kane's information as well. I would like to note that we need to be very expedient. This does not need to be a lengthy process, although I do want it to be a thorough process. And I want to know that we are doing what is best with what we have available to us. But it needs to be immediate as possible. We've got to start doing some things.
With that, I want Dr. Minsky from the system to represent the system to be on that committee also.
And just a note, we had a correspondence this week, I think it was this week, from AASB, Jane, that when we have, when we form committees, you have to take minutes in those committees.
Oh, yes.
Twenty y'all wants to be the secretary.
Well, they have to have all the protocol of the regular meeting, right? You have to advise the public.
We can review that. Can you help us review that and make sure...
Yeah, we need to do it correctly. I just know the minutes have to be taken.
All right. Is there any further discussion or question regarding the motion on the table? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. Item E, I recommend approval of the following contracts or services as attached.
Motion.
No motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I recommend approval of the following personnel items and the addendum as attached.
Motion.
Second.
No motion and a second. Is there any discussion concerning personnel items?
So, Mary.
Who?
Mary, I wanted to ask the special ed stuff.
Ask away. Mike can answer you.
So how many? I see we have additional special ed folks on here.
We'll have to update our running tally.
Yeah.
All those in favor, is there any more questions? Sorry.
Mike, can you explain the interview process for administrators again for us, please?
So we have kind of developed a protocol that has evolved into how we've hired assistant principals and principals. With assistant principals, we have, we form a committee made up of central office personnel and the principal of the school. If there's more than one opening at a time, there's multiple principals involved in that. And then there's another review where there's a follow-up between the principal and finalists. Usually if we have three openings, there may be six finalists, that type of thing. And then I often take turns kind of interviewing them. And then I have a consultation with the principal. This is a, one of the ways that we document, you know, this, the plaintiff's center case that are interested in the process. We're documenting that. And we feel it has been a very successful and orderly way of hiring the assistant principals. For principals, and Mark is kind of the expert in this, has the details kind of laid out. For our elementary and middle school principals, we go through, and our first round is with central office personnel. And the second round is with a committee of two teachers, the teacher of the year, and it was whoever was on my committee, but now they're overlapping. So we'll have to get two teachers from the school. And then there's two community members that the board member selects from that district. If there's a district that shares between two, two board members will pick one. As for our high school principal position, I conduct that in a one-on-one. And the reason is, is because of the high school positions, a lot of current principals will apply for that, either in or out of system. And the kind of more public that is, the less forward your applicants may be, as far as being a current principal. If a sitting principal applies for another principal, they don't get that job, it's kind of hard to go back home to that. So we try to, and we see that more with high school applications. And we haven't had many of those since I've been in here. But so that's kind of the process for administrative hires.
Has that process changed any from the last conversation we had before, and the new process, we were hiring principals and assistant principals?
So, yeah. Last year, when we hired them, assistant principals, I'd say summer before last, that'd be the summer of '16, the, we wanted to kind of have more of a presence from a district level. So me, Tim, Mark, and Ken split up, and we sat in with principals while they hired. I think Tim sat in at New Hope, I sat in at Hazel Green, and I can't remember where all you sat in. And we kind of co-interviewed the principal of the interview process. With that, we still honestly weren't, you know, we had a disparity in our assistant principal collectively, or the body doesn't necessarily reflect our school population. So we have some kind of issues there with our diversity. So we still didn't really kind of, that necessarily wasn't helping. We looked for some best practices of how they were hiring in other systems from around the state. And really liked how Shelby County was doing it. Ken and I sat in a conference call with the Shelby County Assistant Superintendent. And we took kind of their format of what they were doing of hiring assistant principals, and that's doing it at the district level, at the central office, and letting, and how Shelby County views it, when you're hiring an assistant principal, that's not a school-level position, that's a system-level position. And so we tried to kind of bring that philosophy here. That's a drastic change from where we have been, where assistant principals were always hired basically to complement or help serve the principal. What we felt like we were doing in this case with this process was elevating the assistant principal position to a system-wide level position. Because of that, we wanted to have more of an impact in that and use the principals to be a part of that, and to be a part of that decision. But it is generally a system-level decision, and again, my recommendation to the board to consider. And so that is a shift from how we have done it. But we've feedback from the principals. We've been doing this probably now for, since the last summer, was the summer really the first time we...
Yeah, we did this last summer.
Yeah. So this is the first, we haven't been doing it yet for a calendar year. The principals that have gone through the process have been very appreciative, because what happens if you have three assistant principal openings, they were doing all their interviews separate. So you may have the same candidate doing interviews at all different ones. What we go through is the first round, Dr. Minsky and Mr. Cubic will sit through, and maybe Mr. Solly too, and kind of go through and screen all of the applicants. And the principals come in and determine who is the interview pool, who qualifies for that interview, which may be anywhere between 10 and 15 people. And then all the principals with the assistant principal openings will all be in the part of that interview process. And then the next stage is when there's a group of four to six finalists from there, the principals can conduct one-on-ones from there. And then we come back and make a decision, generally with me and Dr. Minsky, and Mr. Cubic and Mr. Solly as part of that.
Be a little more gentle this time.
I want to...
Hold on, I gotta call back in session. The Madison County Board of Education regular session is called back to session.
Okay, with this recommendation, I do want to amend it that with this recommendation, it will come with the inclusion of a committee to be formed and select an expert to come and review the system safety protocols and facilities, and with that, we'll be funding item two on the capital plan.
We had a motion and a second, which we probably need to withdraw before we...
So I withdraw my original motion?
And I withdraw my second.
There you go.
We have a new recommendation.
It's for the new recommendation, as said.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we had some other questions that we wanted to... You had a question that...
Well, there's a list of items on here and the amount's 750, so I was just wondering how we came up with...
Yeah, so the 750 number, again, it was 300,000 back in... For Silliman, was that recommendation made?
2015.
Dan and David and Jeff are still on board.
April 2015, three measures of 300,000. August 2015, three measures of 400,000.
So with that, as we've gone through, and some of those have been able to resolve, but we've also kind of seen a bigger need, so this will be a system-wide effort with that, and we thought that we could accomplish some of those basic needs and some that are mentioned in more detail there. But again, that may change pending what this review team and expert give us.
Yeah, this is probably just a start. I mean...
Should we make it more generic since that's the whole point of getting the...
Yeah, I would like to... And in that, let me make that clear with this recommendation is just going to be security upgrades with that, and we'll just leave off the details that is currently on there.
That's right. We do need to determine who will form that committee. Be happy to take volunteers. I would make the suggestion that we include the school liaison officer from the arsenal, as well as the gentleman who has volunteered in the back of the room, Mr. Sisson. I hope I said that right, due to his experience level, and I think we can start there, as well as a board member, if anyone or two.
I'd be willing to.
I think unfortunately, all of us would like to be part of it, but we can't have quorum, but if Dave and Nathan would like to continue forward, I can get you Ms. Kane's information as well. I would like to note that we need to be very expedient. This does not need to be a lengthy process, although I do want it to be a thorough process, and I want to know that we are doing what is best with what we have available to us. But it needs to be immediate as possible. We've got to start doing some things.
With that, I want Dr. Minsky from the system to represent the system to be on that committee also.
And just to note, we had a correspondence this week, I think it was this week, from AASB, Jane, that when we have... When we form committees, you have to take minutes in those committees.
Twenty-oh wants to be the secretary.
Well, they have to have all the protocol of the regular meeting, right? You have to advise the public if they're...
We can review that. Can you help us review that and make sure...
Yeah, we need to do it correctly.
Yeah.
I just know the minutes have to be taken.
All right, is there any further discussion or question regarding the motion on the table? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. Item E, I recommend approval of the following contracts or services as attached.
Motion.
Second.
No motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 I recommend approval of the following personnel items and the addendum as attached.
Motion?
Second.
No motion and a second. Is there any discussion concerning personnel items?
So, Mary.
Who?
Mary, I wanted to ask the special ed stuff.
Ask away, Mike can answer you there.
So how many... I see we have additional special ed folks on here.
We'll have to update our running tally.
Yeah. I can write it and update it.
All those in favor... Is there any more questions? I'm sorry.
Mike, can you explain the interview process for administrators again for us, please?
So we have kind of developed a protocol that has evolved into how we've hired assistant principals and principals. With assistant principals, we have a former committee made up of central office personnel and the principal of the school. If there's more than one opening at a time, there's multiple principals involved in that. And then there's another review where there's a follow-up between the principal and finalists. Usually if we have three openings, there may be six finalists, that type of thing. And they often take turns kind of interviewing them, and then I'll have a consultation with the principal. This is a... Some... One of the ways that we documented, you know, this plaintiff center case that are interested in the process of... We're documenting that, and we feel it has been a very successful and orderly way of hiring the assistant principals. For principals, and Mark is kind of the expert in this, has the details kind of laid out. For our elementary and middle school principals, we go through in our first round is with central office personnel, and the second round is with a committee of two teachers, the teacher of the year, and it was whoever was on my committee, but now they're overlapping, so we'll have to get two teachers from a school. And then there's two community members that the board member selects from that district. If there's a district that shares between two, two board members will pick one. As for our high school principal position, I conduct that in a one-on-one, and the reason is is because of the high school positions, a lot of current principals will apply for that, like in and out of system, and the kind of more public that is, the less forward your applicants may be as far as being a current principal. If a sitting principal applies for another principal, and they don't get that job, it's kind of hard to go back home to that. So we try to... And we see that more with high school applications, and we haven't had many of those since I've been here. So that's kind of the process for administrative hires.
Has that process changed any from the last conversation we had before in the new process, we were hiring principals and assistant principals?
So, yeah, last year when we hired them, assistant principals, I'd say summer before last, so that'd be the summer of '16, the... We wanted to kind of have more of a presence from a district level. So me, Tim, Mark, and Ken split up, and we sat in with principals while they hired. I think Tim sat in at New Hope, I sat in at Hazel Green, and I can't remember where all you sat in, and we kind of co-interviewed the principal of the interview process. With that, we still honestly weren't... You know, we have disparity, and our assistant principal collectively, or the body doesn't necessarily reflect our school population, so we have some kind of issues there with our diversity. So we still didn't really kind of... That necessarily wasn't helping. We looked for some best practices of how they were hiring in other systems from around the state, and really liked how Shelby County was doing it. Ken and I sat in a conference call with the Shelby County Assistant Superintendent, and we took kind of their format of what they were doing of hiring assistant principals, and that's doing it at the district level, at the central office, and letting we... And how Shelby County views it, when you're hiring an assistant principal, that's not a school-level position, that's a system-level position. And so we tried to kind of bring that philosophy here. That's a drastic change from where we have been, where assistant principals were always hired basically to complement or help serve the principal. What we felt like we were doing in this case with this process was elevating the assistant principal position to a system-wide level position. Because of that, we wanted to have more of an impact in that and use the principals to be a part of that and to be a part of that decision, but it is generally a system-level decision, and again, my recommendation to the board to consider. And so that is a shift from how we have done it, but we've feedback from the principals. We've been doing this probably now for... Since the last summer, was the summer really the first time we...
Yeah, we did it last summer.
So this is the first... We haven't been doing it yet for a calendar year. The principals that have gone through the process have been very appreciative, because what happens if you have three assistant principal openings, they were doing all their interviews separate, so you may have the same candidate doing interviews at all different ones. What we go through is the first round, Dr. Minsky and Mr. Cubic will sit through, and maybe Mr. Solly too, and kind of go through and screen all of the applicants, and the principals come in and determine who is the interview pool, who qualifies for that interview, which may be anywhere between 10 and 15 people. And then all the principals with assistant principal openings will all be in the part of that interview process. And then the next stage is when there's a group of four to six finalists from there, the principals can conduct one-on-ones from there, and then we come back and make a decision, generally with me and Dr. Minsky, and Mr. Cubic and Mr. Solly are part of that.
Any further discussion or any questions regarding the personnel agenda? I'm sorry, I... All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Move to other business. Dr. Minsky sent out a list of dates for board meetings. Does anybody have any large issue other than...
Well, I sent Mark an email with some dates, particularly in the July timeframe. I will be on travel and, yeah, for most of the month.
Okay, so that's starting in July?
Yeah.
So are we good to approve the March list through, say, June 21st?
I won't be here the 22nd, because I'm here tonight. You know why?
Yes.
You don't want that in the minutes, right?
No, I don't want that in the minute.
So right now, we have March 22nd, April 5th, April 19th, May 8th, May 17th, June 7th, and June 21st. Can we agree on that list?
I'm moving on.
I'm good with that.
I'm fine with that.
Let me double-check June 7th, I'm sorry. But I have problems in July, too, so we need to make sure there's...
So you know what your July dates are?
I know the ones I can't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
So what July date?
July 16th. I think what he had on there was July 16th and then one on July 26th.
He had July 12th, 19th, and 26th.
Okay, the 12th and the 26th are probably... Are will absolutely be no good for me.
The 19th and 26th, I can't see.
Do we want to just schedule through June, and then wait for those later?
The 12th, I won't be here.
For the most part, the July ones will be personnel.
Could we... Is it the whole week you guys won't be here on those 19th, 26th, and 12th?
I can make it early on...
But say, could we just shift July to Tuesdays?
I'll be gone... Potentially be gone from the 6th of July till the 13th, and then from the 20th of July until the 28th of July.
Let's just do through June.
We're not having a meeting July 5th.
Let's just look at July later.
I just stole somebody's pen.
Let's look at July later.
All right, let's just go with June, and if we can do perhaps a little doodle poll of when we're all available in July, that may make this faster. We've got a couple months before July, hopefully.
Yeah.
I know they come quickly, and then we can see when everybody's available in July, even if we have to have a little different than our Thursday routine in order to accommodate personnel. I know that's a busy month for getting everybody's contracts prepared and completed in order to have them start in August. One of the things I would like to add under other business, not to put you on the spot there, Mr. Solly, I would like for us to readdress... I've gotten some information from some of the principals in the district and other areas that... In my district as well as other areas, that we made a change a while back to alter the way we did the exam schedule based on attendance, and we chose to eliminate some of those. And I think some of our middle-of-the-road students, as well as some of our attendants, has faltered a bit, and if you guys could just come back with us and kind of give us an update and perhaps a plan to move forward with something that may be more effective than what we're doing now, I would appreciate that. Doesn't necessarily have to be like by tomorrow, but before the end of the school year, I'd like to have that addressed so that we can get that information out before kids come out.
Something for this?
Yes, correct. Now, before finals this year.
That may be tough.
No, no, I think we maintain our current course, but I would... It's easier to disseminate information if it's out there before the end of the school year as opposed to after. Does anyone else have any other business they would like to discuss as we go around the table? Anything interesting or... Come on. Y'all got some basketball going on.
I was gonna say, I mean, if Nathan doesn't want to go, I'll go, but the Sparkman varsity girls and varsity boys tumbling, taking down Hoover, and that's awesome, so they...
One point.
That's right. So they will advance to the semifinals next Thursday morning, Mr. Shaw, is that correct?
Thursday.
Thursday morning, so congratulations to the Sparkman varsity girls and varsity boys.
And Hazel Green, kind of starting to become customary that we, you know, have excellence, but I'm certainly proud of Hazel Green basketball program and what they're doing out there. Great students, and went down last week to Hansville and watched them play. I didn't make it to the last game, but went to the games before that, and excellent work. So very proud of our kids out at Hazel Green.
And it's both your varsity boys and varsity girls as well, and our boys, that's pretty awesome. That's pretty awesome.
So four teams in the final four is exciting. So, yeah, this Wednesday morning at 9:00 and 10:30 are the Hazel Green games, and Thursday morning, 9:00 and 10:30 are the Sparkman games, and I appreciate the High School Association kind of listening to us and trying to schedule these games where girls and boys from the same school are kind of playing back-to-back to...
Has this happened in Madison County?
We've never had two teams, the boys and girls from one school ever make the final four the same year, and now we have two schools to do it at the same time, so...
Would you talk to them about maybe poor county schools not having to drive all the way to Rowan Oak to play basketball?
Pass that on, Ms. Saveries.
Do that, tell them, Ms. Doe said, it's a long drive.
He probably misses hearing from you, Ms. Doe.
Do what?
He probably misses hearing from you.
He probably does. He probably does. I might give him the ring, maybe I'll see him at State Track maybe.
At this point, we will entertain a motion to move back into executive session to discuss a student issue.
So moved?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
At this point, to our few remaining guests, we will move in to discuss a student issue. We will come back and probably move back into executive pending litigation, and then come back and discuss. So the only thing that will be voted on at this point is an expulsion, so if y'all want to hang out for that.
Somebody just texted me.
Yes, because we're combining...
Shoot, I just remembered, too, the...